Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. This is a regular city commission meeting. My name is Omar Quintanilla and I'm sitting in for the mayor who's out of town today. We are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to follow that by the invocation by Commissioner Tony Aguirre.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As Bowhead Lloyd, we thank you for another great day. We acknowledge that every day that we spend here on earth, it's a day that we spend preparing for the day you come for us. Lord, we ask you to be kind and be gentle to all of those associated with the city and those that are involved in so many decisions that need to be made. Lord, around the world there's turmoil, there's war, and with this recent attack on the country of Israel and all those with... Yeah, I just can't believe these things happen in this world, Lord. Be kind to us, Lord. Get us out of this way of being. In your name we pray. Amen.
We're going to begin the meeting with some proclamations. We're going to start with Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Commissioner Samora?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Ms. Deborah Tumain? Oh, hi. How are you? Pleasure. Thank you so much for coming. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome again to our city commission meeting for today, October the 9th. Just as a warning, I am holding seven proclamations, so I intend to read every single one. So be, please be patient. Well, go ahead and commence now because it'll be a long 15 minutes. City McAllen proclamation, state of Texas, county Hidalgo, city of McAllen. Whereas, on average, about 550 babies are born with Down Syndrome in Texas each year, and about 6,000 nationwide. And whereas, there are more than 1,250 individuals with Down Syndrome living right here in Hidalgo County, and 250,000 individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States. And whereas, Down Syndrome is the most common, oh boy, chromosomal condition that results in individuals being born with an extra copy of chromosome 21. And whereas, while research and early intervention has resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected, more efforts are needed to break down barriers and promote advocacy and access to resources for individuals with Down Syndrome. And whereas, local organizations such as the Rio Grande Valley Down Syndrome Association, Easter Seals RGB, Capable Kids Foundation, and Special Olympics raise awareness and education and provide services and support for individuals with Down Syndrome and their families throughout the entire Rio Grande Valley. And whereas, possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles within our communities. And whereas, individuals with Down Syndrome should have an equal opportunity to chase their dreams, take pride in their achievements, be included in their community, and reach their fullest potential. And now, therefore, I, Joaquin Samora, City Commissioner for the city of McAllen, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and city commission, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Here to onto my hand comes the Seal City of McAllen side by myself. That was proclamation number one. Proclamation number two... No, I'm just kidding. We could have Ms. Deborah Tumain say a couple of words. Let's give these folks a big hand.
Before I do anything else, let me introduce at least our individuals with Down Syndrome who are here at the front. We have Miranda, we have Nayza, we have Erin, Viva, Kerwin, and Gondarley. Yeah? Is that everybody? Yay! As a parent of a middle schooler with Down Syndrome and as the current president of the Rio Grande Valley Down Syndrome Association, I would like to say thank you to the mayor, Pro Tem, to the commissioners, for all you do in McAllen to include and welcome and celebrate people with Down Syndrome and other disabilities. Each of the individuals here goes to school or works, goes to church, is involved in the library, in life, in community events. You'll see folks at parades, at sports events throughout the valley. And it just makes a big difference to feel that everyone is welcome in all of those places, and that folks can be employed, that folks can work, and that folks can demonstrate their gifts, their talents, their strengths and abilities. And so, we appreciate this and we look forward to seeing everyone celebrate Down Syndrome Awareness Month this October. And just so you know, you are all invited. On Saturday, October 21st, we have our Step Up for Down Syndrome Awareness Walk in Edinburgh at the municipal park. But it's a great event with over 1,800 people from around the valley. It's an exciting opportunity to just celebrate and have fun and appreciate that different is not less. So, thank you all so much.
Okay, next we have...
They're all yours.
Next, we have Taco Palenque Day presented by Commissioner Aguirre.
tell you that I'm very glad I'm doing this proclamation, because I met this family 1998, 1997. And it's a small world. I had Broadway Hardware and Taco Cabana had just closed down on the corner of 10th Street and Jackson. And it was... We saw that it was moving again, and I went over there and I met the father and the family. And they were coming from Laredo. And they were... They saw something in McAllen and wanted to be in McAllen. We have a proclamation here, and that was 25 years ago. Whereas, the great story of Taco Palenque began on October 10th, 1998, as a home-based business in McAllen, Texas, when the restaurant was founded by Juan Francisco Ochoa and his family. Whereas, Taco Palenque has remained a vital restaurant to the community it serves. And whereas, Taco Palenque's commitment is to provide the best quality of food, best service, customer service, and treat everyone as a family, as they would treat themselves. Whereas, over the last 25 years, Taco Palenque has been steadfast and dedicated to the service of customers and its to community. And they have done so much for this community. Now, therefore, I, Antonio Tony Aguirre, in the City Commission of McAllen, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, here proclaim October 10th, 2023, as Taco Palenque Day.
Thank you very much. We are very grateful, so grateful with the people of McAllen. And we're honored with this distinction of Taco Palenque Day after the 25 years. And we've been expanding... McAllen was actually the point of skyrocket for the brand, so we're very, very grateful and very glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Our next proclamation will be National Community Planning Month, given by Commissioner Castillo.
City of McAllen proclamation, state of Texas, county Hidalgo, city of McAllen. Whereas, change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of McAllen. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the city of McAllen, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Castillo, City Commissioner of the city of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue of authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Planning Month.
Thank you. As the commissioner said, you know, planning is intended to create a high quality of life for the residents and for the city, with the ultimate goal of creating a thriving city. Planning touches on land use, infrastructure, open spaces, transportation, all this stuff because of its goal, right? We just recently adopted a new comprehensive plan, Envision McAllen, and I can now announce that it is now an award-winning plan. I was let know a couple of weeks ago that the American Planning Association Texas chapter has granted Envision McAllen a Best Comprehensive Plan Award for 2023. We'll be receiving it officially at the conference for the APA Texas in next month. And I certainly invite any commissioners who want to go to Corpus Christi to make the trip. It's quick, it's fast, and it'll be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Congratulations on that award. And next, we have Fire Prevention Week by Commissioner Cabeza de Vaca.
Just level up some of this side. Just balance it. So great to have this, ladies and gentlemen, over here. So important, you know, for us as family members, for as parents, as sons, as brothers, you know, to have our families protected is the most important thing. You know, and very proud to have the best of the best firefighters here in McAllen and our police officers as well. But it takes all of us, you know? And we're going to read this proclamation. State of Texas, county Hidalgo, city of McAllen. Whereas, the city of McAllen is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our great city. Whereas, U.S. fire departments responded to 338,000 home fires in 2021 alone, resulting in 2,800 civilian deaths, making fires a serious public concern, both locally and nationally. And whereas, two of every five home fires starts in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting in unattended cooking. Whereas, McAllen first responders are dedicated to reducing home fires and home fire injuries through our prevention and protection education. And whereas, we encourage people to check their kitchens for fire hazards, use safety cooking practices, be responsive to public education measures, and to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, I, Pepe Cabeza de Vaca, City Commissioner of the city of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and city commission, do hereby proclaim October 8th to 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week.
Hello, everybody. My name is Juan Gloria. I'm just the McAllen Fire Chief. And like Commissioner Cabeza de Vaca mentioned, cooking safety starts with you. And talking about some of the statistics, you know, there is all kinds of different reasons why a fire may start at a residence. But it is impressive how in the recent years, while certain other causes of fire have, you know, beginning to decline in the last few decades, the one that continues to increase is kitchen fires. And today, they're making about 49% of every structure fire in the United States. It's a fire that one way or another started with an appliance or just unattended cooking at home. And that is also one of the leading causes of injuries and fatalities, you know, in the United States. So, once again, that is the reason why we're here today. And I want to take the opportunity to recognize to my right and to my left, we have our fire marshal, our assistant fire chief, we have our fire inspectors, we have our public educators, we have Sparky here. And they are the individuals that may not be wearing, you know, the fire suit and the red helmets going into fires, being very visible. But these are the individuals that are the true heroes out there behind the scenes, inspecting schools, inspecting the mall, hotels, any other facility that we can possibly can, working through new construction to make sure that every building is safe and that, you know, God forbid, in the event of a fire, you know, making sure that that is a fire that can be put out in a quick and easy way. And so, once again, thank you very much. Remember that cooking safety starts with you. And please help me give a round of applause to our Fire Prevention Division of the city of McAllen. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have Agenda Item Public Comment. This is the time on the agenda where if you signed up for a specific agenda item, we'll ask you to come to the front. Today, we have one individual signed up for an Agenda Item Public Comment, and that's Beverly Avila.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Avila, and I'm here representing Texas public school employees in regards to the upcoming Proposition 9 on the November ballot. Time is a powerful concept. Once it sets in, you feel it. Unfortunately, for retired Texas public school employees, nearly two decades have passed while living on a fixed income with no permanent across-the-board cost of living adjustment to their standard annuity from the state of Texas. Unlike Social Security, which most Texas educators don't get anyway, the Texas teacher retirement system, which is for all public school employees, has zero protection for providing cost of living increases adjusted for inflation to its own pension system. 60% of U.S. states have an automatic COLA structure built into their teacher pension system. Texas is in the minority of states requiring COLAs to be passed on an ad hoc basis, this time going to the voters in November. The time has come to get this done. With the greatest inflationary increases in almost 50 years and with no adjustment to the standard fixed annuity for any educator who has retired since 2004, their purchasing power has plummeted. As a result, the very Texans who devoted their lives and careers working full-time for our great state have been forgotten. Retired public education employees struggle to maintain the resources necessary to cover basic and fundamental needs, including food, housing, and their own health care. It's glaringly obvious, considering the length of time since our last COLA and the punishing inflationary realities, that our Texas retired school employees deserve and badly need a living adjustment to their TRS monthly standard annuity. The crucial need for a COLA is profound and transcends partisan politics. The average TRS monthly annuity last year was $2,174 monthly. Many are living paycheck to paycheck, or excuse me, hoping to be able to afford food and medical bills. Texas, on average, contributes less than any other state to support teacher pensions. A pension raise for retired educators isn't just good for us, it's good for the local and Texas economy. 94% of all TRS pension payments are spent locally. You shouldn't have to be a millionaire to retire with dignity and respect in the state of Texas. Educators deserve to retire in the communities they spent their career serving without being crushed by the rising cost of living and stagnant pensions. We humbly ask for your support in the community to encourage voters to vote for Proposition 9. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I do have flyers, which I think have been dispensed to you with further information. And I have yard signs available. Let me know if anybody is willing to post one in their yards. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
We will.
I'll open up the public hearing now. We have Item 1A through 1 through 5, which are routine items.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have, as you mentioned, five items listed in routine. They're conditional use permits. As always, they come with a favorable recommendation, we're playing in zoning commission and received no opposition. They can be approved in one motion or discussed separately as desired. They are conditional use permit renewal for one year at 400 Nolana Avenue, Suite G. A conditional use permit renewal for a bar for one year at 2001 South 10th Street. A conditional use permit, brand new, for one year for a hookah bar and grill at 1215 South 10th Street, Suite D. A conditional use permit renewal for one year for a bar at 2000 Nolana, and a conditional use permit for life of the use for a church at 2600 Xenia Avenue.
Is there anybody here to speak against any of these five items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second to approve Item A 1 through 5. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Next item is initial rezoning to R1 at 4800 Auburn Avenue. This property is located along the north side of Auburn Avenue, approximately 1,000 feet east of Taylor. It is part of a larger development. Adjacent zoning is AO to the south and R1 to the east, and then to the north, it's ETJ. Surrounding uses include single-family homes, ag land, as well as vacant land. The applicant is requesting R1 for a greater 121 lot, single-family home development. The item was presented at the September 19th Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. There was no opposition, and it was unanimously recommended for approval.
Anybody here to speak on behalf of this item? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
This is an initial zoning to R1 at 8100 North Taylor Road. This property is located on the east side of North Taylor Road, again, part of an overall 25-acre parcel. Adjacent zoning is ETJ all around with AO to the south. The applicant is requesting R1, as I mentioned, for an overall 121 lot, single-family home development. Item was presented at September 19th, P&amp;Z, no opposition, unanimously recommended for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any comment? Anyone here to speak on behalf of this item? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item C.
This is a conditional use permit for one year for a food truck park at 701 East Highway 83. This property is located at the northeast corner of Business 83 and McCall. It is zoned I-1. Adjacent zoning is I-1 to the west and east, C-4 to the north, and C-3 to the south. Surrounding uses include businesses, restaurants. The initial CUP was approved last August. The applicant is proposing to continue operating said food truck from 8:00 a.m. to midnight daily. Staff did receive one call from a neighboring business owner regarding just stricter food truck park requirements in general. They wanted more buffering. The item was heard at the September 19th, P&amp;Z. There was no opposition at that meeting, and it was unanimously recommended for approval.
Anyone here to speak against this item?
Motion to approve. Second, and discussion?
Okay.
Edgar, Mr. Garcia, on this matter, is there a restroom requirement?
There are. There needs to be a restroom within 600 feet, I believe, for this one. The Martinez Furniture Mart store is the one that serves as the restroom.
Okay. Didn't cross my mind.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item D is amendment of the zoning ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve in the men.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Next up is a public hearing in ordinance for annexation of 1.09 acres at 4800 Auburn. As I mentioned, this property is located on the north side of Auburn. The applicant has, or was initially rezoned to R1 earlier today. Staff didn't receive any opposition to the annexation, and we recommend annexation.
Second. Anyone here to speak against this annexation? There's a motion and a second. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Next item is public hearing in ordinance for the annexation of the remaining 24.54 acres of that same development. Again, we're recommending annexation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anyone here to speak against this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I'll close the public hearing part, and we'll go on to item number two, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that you would want removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve all items.
And that's...
2A through...
8 to L, or M also?
M also.
M also?
M 1 and 2.
Motion to approve 2A to M.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Do we add a consideration or approval of an MOU between the city of McAllen Fire Department and South Texas College?
I do want to point out that Item 2L was approved during the Consent Agenda, and that item is the city's support of Proposition 9. And so, the city is encouraging its residents to vote in favor of Proposition 9, which is the cost of living adjustment for retirees. And so, we're encouraging the individual, the voters from McAllen to do so. And so, it passed through the Consent Agenda item, and I just wanted to bring it out publicly so that it isn't left through just the one agenda item. It is emphasized that this is something that we're behind and that we're encouraging the voters to also participate and to vote for. And so, thank you very much. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, Mr. Rodriguez. The item before you is the, we are requesting authorization to officiate a memorandum of understanding between the City of McAllen and South Texas College for cooperation in relations to firefighter-related training. McAllen Fire Department and South Texas College have been working together through the years in relation to firefighting and law enforcement programs. This MOU will further strengthen collaboration through resource sharing and issuance of continuous education credits when applicable. Staff recommends approval of MOU between the City of McAllen Fire Department and SDC.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
3B is consideration and approval of easy cross lane upgrade at McAllen-Nadalgo International Bridge.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. So, each cross lanes are unmanned lanes at the McAllen-Nadalgo International Bridge, and what this project will do is have a gate at the very front where the map is, and this gate will be able to open, you, car will be able to drive, and it'll open up to three different toll lanes, so make it a lot efficient and quicker. So, the cost is for $60,354. Staff is recommending approval.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
C is consideration or approval of parking services agreement with Municipal Parking Services, Inc.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the commission, city manager. For Item 3C, the Transit Downtown Services Department intends to enter into an agreement with Municipal Parking Services for a parking enforcement, for parking enforcement technology equipment pilot. This is a no-cost solution to the City of McAllen and would be a six-month pilot project, after which the city can renew for two additional one-year terms, should we choose to extend. Staff recommends approval to enter into an agreement with Municipal Parking Services. I'll gladly entertain any questions, should we have any.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Consideration approval of change order number three for the Anzaldeos Bridge infrastructure improvements.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, change order number three consists of furnishings to and installing the folding partition in the inbound building for Rooms 254, 257, 212, and 213. The item is part of the furniture package removed during the rebid. This item has been requested currently due to the long lead time for the partitions. Staff will be submitting a comprehensive furniture package for approval at a later date. Just to note, this item is budgeted. The consultant, along with staff, recommend approval of change order number three in the amount of $71,005.35 with no additional working days. Since there was no bridge board today, we'll be presenting this retroactively at the next bridge board meeting, but we seek your approval so that we can purchase it, and we open it up for any questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
E is consideration approval of change order number four for the McAllen-Nadalgo International Bridge pedestrian improvements.
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, this, this item is for the Hidalgo Bridge. It's for the installation of two new column furouts for Room 101 and 103 in their waiting room. It's also to recycle and reinstall some brick that's been demolished for Room 100 in the primary inspection area. Millstone Architecture and the City of McAllen Bridge Department and the engineering staff recommend approval of change order number four in the amount of $8,700 and 12 additional working days. This item will be presented at the next bridge board meeting, available bridge board meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
F is award of contract for the McAllen Fore and Trade Zone Stormwater Pump Station improvements.
The scope of work consists of upgrades of an existing stormwater pump station and provisions for auxiliary power in the event of an outage. The pump station serves a drainage basin of roughly 246 acres, characterized by commercial and industrial developments in the area of Military Highway and Southware Road. Built in the early 80s and currently manually-operated electric pump is outdated and lacks backup power. The project will include the installation of automated electric pumps, reconstruction of its concrete wet well, and related apprentices. The contract amount under the consideration is within the program project budget. The engineer records Sames, Inc., and staff recommend award of the contract to the lowest responsive bidder, RGV Industrial Machine Shop and Pumps LLC of Elsa, Texas, in the amount of $199,718 with no cents, and with a contract time not to exceed 200 days, and we open it up for any questions.
Is that installed?
That's installed.
Installed.
Yes, sir.
Bridge is installed. Motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
4A is consideration and possible approval of an update to the emergency services ordinance to provide for a sole provider ambulance system. Counselor?
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, Sir Rodriguez, as previously discussed, this is a request for consideration to amend the emergency medical service ordinance to have the official contracted ambulance service contractor be the sole provider within McAllen's jurisdiction. The recommended amendment will help further regulate utilization of ambulance services in regards to an ambulance patient or patients in need of transportation to or from a healthcare facility by a commercial entity or paid individuals whose transport originates within the regulated service area, meaning our city limits here in McAllen, as defined in the ordinance amendment. Staff recommends approval to amend the EMS ordinance to have the official ambulance service contractor provide all ambulance and patient services within the City of McAllen. I'm open for any questions.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Mayor Commissioners, this, this was geared to emergency transports, so that the, the ordinance is clarified to direct emergency transports to the sole designated as per ordinance, emergency transport provider.
Problem.
911? 911 calls, correct.
That is correct.
Not, not scheduled, routine transfers.
Correct.
I have a question. On this matter, if there are other units of government that have individual contracts with another provider, how does that, I mean, does that, is there a conflict there?
So, so, con, well, the ordinance may conflict with a standing contract outside of the ordinance to the extent a, an emergency 911 transport would be required. But what the ordinances have provided for the last 20-plus years is that there, in the City of McAllen, is one designated 911 emergency transport provider. This ordinance was redrafted to clarify that that service is a restriction to all such transports, and that all such transports should run through the 911 dispatch system.
Oh, I see. Okay. And if it doesn't...
Now, I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
I was saying, if, if an emergency doesn't arise, let's say it's at a football game, there's a football player with an injured player, right, broken leg. Usually, there's at least an ambulance parked outside, if I'm not mistaken. I mean...
So, I, I'm not exactly sure what arrangements the school district makes to provide for that, but I do know that the city's designated provider is staging in the area so that if there is an emergency at any of the games, they are readily available, should they be needed, and a call is made.
But the ordinance isn't necessarily going to cause some sort of interference for the contract that's maybe made by another unit of government.
If, if somebody wants to contract for routine transports, that's perfectly permissible.
Very well. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Question again. So, this was already in our ordinance?
That's right.
It is, it's just clarifying it.
That's right. There has always been one designated 911 service provider for the city. This further clarifies that emergency calls should run through that system.
Motion to approve.
Yes. You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Then there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
4B is an ordinance providing for a budget amendment for emergency medical services. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, this is directly related to the special meeting we had a few weeks ago, and in order to provide the funding that City Commission approved, we need this ordinance for a budget amendment.
Does this budget amendment entail, like, a term of a year or six months? I can't recall.
One year.
One year.
From when it started.
Correct.
Not from today.
This is just to, because we had some money obligated in last fiscal year. We just started our fiscal year October the 1st, so this is the balance of that year.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
5A is a variance, and I'll let it carry.
This is a variance for paving width, curb, and gutter and sidewalk for an interior street. Right-away curb and gutter sidewalk requirements for a cul-de-sac and a contractual agreement at 9212 North Benson. So, JOG subdivision is a proposed six-lot, single-family home development on the east side of North Benson Palm Drive, approximately 190 feet south of Mile 8. Property consists of about 10 acres, and it is in McAllen's ETJ. The engineer on behalf of the developer has requested three variances. First one being right-away curb and gutter and sidewalk requirement for an interior cul-de-sac. The second one being a contractual agreement in lieu of escrow for paving, curb, and gutter, and sidewalk for North Benson Palm Drive. Staff is recommending approval of both those variances. The last variance is to the 32-foot paving width requirement, curb and gutter and sidewalk requirements on an interior street. The applicant is proposing 26 feet of paving instead of 32. Staff is recommending approval of the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, however, we are recommending that we maintain the 32 feet of paving. This variance was presented at the September 19 P&amp;Z. There was some lengthy discussion. Ultimately, P&amp;Z recommended disapproval of the reduced paving request for the interior street, but approval of all the other variances. There are four options before you. Staff and P&amp;Z's recommendation is option 2, which is approval of all the, all the variances except for the 26-foot paving request. We recommend maintaining that at 32 feet. I will say that the applicant is here. They have spoken with our fire department. Fire feels comfortable with 26. The concern that we have with that is, even though it gives you that bidirectional traffic, if anybody starts parking on that street, it really impacts the mobility of your fire engine. But, like I said, applicant is here.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Not right now.
In terms of infrastructure, we don't have any stormwater drainage or anything out there.
There's nothing to connect, so, and that's why we're recommending approval.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody want to have further insight from the developer? Or are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve option 2, unless the applicant is...
With the 32.
Right.
Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Itlali Gonzalez. This is a family plot. We had started with an 18 of width for that street. I, I know it's not possible. We were thinking of keeping it at 26. I heard what the, the concern is, but it is a family plot, so we're, we're all just going to be family. We're not going to have people parking outside, so that's why we're requesting it at 26 and not 32. I don't know if that would be possible, since it's also in Hidalgo County and not, not in city limits.
It's in the ETJ?
Yes.
ETJ, excuse me. And, and they're not having to do the, the curbs, right?
Correct.
Correct. So, basically, it's, it's six more feet of paving.
Mr. Garcia, did you say that this property is or is not within the ETJ?
It is in the ETJ, yes, sir.
Because of the diagram?
That looks weird. So, if you remember, maybe, what was it, last year, a couple of years ago, we traded some sections of ETJ with Mission, and so, that left a little shark fin, for lack of a better term, and so, that line, everything to the west of that is our ETJ. It's a little deceptive.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, this ETJ line being depicted does not reflect the current ETJ limit? Just, just so we're clarified.
It, everything to the southeast of that is part of Mission's ETJ, which we traded. Everything to the northwest is McAllen's ETJ.
Oh, I see. I'm reading it wrong. Okay, got it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I, I noticed an extra cost for six feet of paving, okay? But it, and it's going to be six. It would have been two or three, two. You know, I probably would have gone the other way, but you've got six dwellings. And, and today, it's a family plot, without a doubt, but you are subdividing it, and things happen in this world, and somebody sells, and somebody, and you don't have a restriction that it's only family. We're just subdividing it, right? Through, without a restriction. So, tomorrow or the next day, something happens, and you want to sell to outside of the family, they are able to sell to outside of the family, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So, I think the conceding to some of the other things that normally a subdivision goes through, I think that the recommendation of staff of going to 32 is what I would go for.
Mr. Garcia, on the, on the, again, the photograph depicting the highlighted subdivision?
Yes.
That's, I guess, belongs to the applicant. Are the streets that are around there that are butting that subdivision, are they the same width?
They're around the 20, 24 to 26, yes, sir.
Oh, so there's one narrow.
Yeah, they're about, they're, they're pretty narrow. Yes, sir.
Okay, how, oh, because that's in Mission, or what?
It's in the ETJ.
Yeah, but they've already butted out.
Correct. That's previously...
So, whatever requirements the county had, that's the big one, right?
Okay. I just made that observation. Obviously, I'm looking at a satellite view, so I can't tell if it's 26 or 32.
And this is proposed as a private street.
Oh, it's a private street.
No gates, but it's private.
Right, as a private street.
Well, if the neighborhood around it is, is one-way...
I tend to agree.
I'll amend my motion to proceed with option 2, but that the requirement only be 26 feet.
Does that would be the option 1?
Or, let me see.
Is that option 1?
It would be as requested.
As requested, okay.
As requested, yes.
So, there's a motion for option 1. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
You guys were, were fine with those 26, or responding?
Well, it's outside the city, though.
Later on, I guess.
About 70 years.
Maybe. Is this a safety, safety concern?
No, I understand.
Yeah, so, obviously, in the event of a fire, it's going to be tight getting there. Can we find our way when we're another? We always do. You know, can there be the potential for, you know, taking longer to establish water supply, to establish fire attack, to effect a rescue, to protect exposures? You know, you know, we can go on and on, you know, with all the what-ifs, you know, and so, is, is the 30, 30-plus, you know, better for us? The answer is yes, but I also, I also understand the predicament, and so, to answer your question, yes, there could be potential challenges. If nobody's in the way, then, yeah, we'll go right through it.
If nobody's in the way, then yeah, we'll go right through it. So, it will be circumstantial.
What did your department say upon review of it?
And so, it is my understanding that our inspectors requested the 32. Similar to what I'm saying right now, we can live with the 26, but again, it'll be tight, and we're opening up ourselves to a potential challenge if something was to happen, but they understand what their predicament is, so...
Does the cul-de-sac mitigate the problems of getting in and out, or at least turning around?
Not in every circumstance. You know, it all depends on what type of apparatus we're going to need to get in there. If there is no water supply, especially being the ETJ, so we're going to be bringing in tanker shuttles, tankers. We need to deploy porta tanks, you know, set up drafting operation to establish water supply, so there's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of spaces needed for those type of operations. Again, is it impossible? No, it's not. It would just be a potential challenge.
And how many housing units are you proposing to place there now?
The new ones are going to be four. There's already one existing on the very corner to Salalas Drive. That's already established. So, it's going to be three new homes only.
Oh, just three?
On that road, because the other ones are going to go through Benson Palm Drive. They have access to that street.
And what's the length of the proposed private drive, Mr. Garcia?
It's about a little bit less than 200, sir. 200 feet.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you.
2A is immigration and respite center report.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, City Commissioners, immigrant drop-off numbers from CBP and IFS have continued to rise over the last few weeks. In fact, the last two weeks, we've seen a fairly significant rise. Our average throughout the later part of August and early September was in the 3,000 to 4,000 range per week of immigrants being dropped off. Two weeks ago, that number increased to 4,318, and this last week, the number was 5,424. So, to put that a little bit in perspective, over the last six weeks, while we've averaged just under 600 per day, last week, that number was up to 775 per day. We have COVID positives. Two weeks ago, our number was 5.2%, and this last week, we're at 4.6%. Anzo Duas Park remains active. We do have a current population of a little over 500. At Anzo Duas Park right now, we do have a capacity of about 2,000, should the need arise. And the only other thing I'll mention is with those increased numbers, Catholic charities did reach out and request the use of the state buses, the TDM buses. Last week, we had a total of 10 buses that left Anzo Duas Park to head to various parts of the country. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Future agenda items? Anything to add?
I would like to, more for a workshop. We had the opportunity to be at TML this past week, and I was speaking to some mayors and commissioners from other cities and saw a lot of presentations on public art, so maybe we can start doing a little push on public art, check where we can start getting that. I noticed that municipalities have a public art master plan, actually, and even routes of bikes and taking to one, saying sculpture to another, so it's a nice route. And we have always talked about making McAllen Destination City, and we're building on that, and this will be something that is going to definitely positive for the community, so we can start checking into it.
Any other to add?